Five thirty to seven thirty in the bouncer's meeting.
Thought it was gonna be at the community center. Hi. Maybe she saw the house there.
There's a conflict between our meeting or the twenty-third that he. In Sage Grass.
Well, is what time is the Sage Grass meeting on the twenty-third? Is that an evening?
I'm guessing so, but I'll have to check with John to find out where his meeting is.
You're drawing it out of the window.
The local one is the twenty-first.
Five thirty.
And maybe just write it. So I've decided I'm gonna put change in my life and I'm not.
And that one on the twenty-first is here.
Yes, it'll be in the bouncer's meeting.
Good morning, Dominic.
Good morning, sir. I have my audio off.
Nope, you're good. I just first off wanted to say that I'm sorry I never got back to you yesterday. It was a a day of back-to-back-to-back meetings.
Sure, no problem.
So, um, good morning, everybody. This is January ninth, twenty twenty-five at nine oh two AM. Arnie County Court is in session for a work session to discuss the land use appeals process. Not something we normally, the county court does on a regular basis. I guess it's like been twelve, ten years since the last time the court had to to address this kind of an issue. So we're here to kind of get schooled up on the process and how we're gonna move forward with it and whatnot as a work session. I think I I think Brandon, I think you've sent out most most of the information. I'll have a packet on the on the file, the record file, the record. And but is there anything, I guess, you want to kind of give a brief summary for the record?
Sure, I can give a general overview and then maybe add something at the end. The I've made a a brief, if you will, a report that provides a background to the Gilmore land use file and the process that was utilized for reviewing it by the planning commission. In addition to that, there's another printout below that that I provided you. This is from the county zoning ordinance. And if you start on that second page, that's the process outlined here today. Before the overview, the the county court was provided a copy of the entire record prior to the work session. So Jim and Sue Gilmore have applied for a conditional use permit to establish what's called a non-farm dwelling. There are, I won't go into the nature of it necessarily, but there are generally two types of housing that are permitted in our EFU zones, those that are quote in conjunction with agriculture and those that are not. There are several subcategories under both of those, but this particular application by these folks was for what's called a non-farm dwelling. They after submission of the application materials, I made the call to move the review to the planning commission. Non-farm dwellings are typically now done administratively. But staff has the option to move it to the planning commission if there is substantial or substantive comments that are received, or if you just know that this is probably something that needs to go there instead of waiting for an appeal to happen at your decision. So that's what happened in this case. I just moved this straight to the planning commission. Their review hearing was on September eighteenth. At the meeting, the one of the participants, and I believe it's Mr. English's representation at the time, requested that the record be left seven, open seven days after the initial hearing that night to allow for further information or communication or comments to be submitted into the record. It was discussed and and approved that night that an additional two seven-day periods on top of that would be added to allow the applicant to respond to any new information and then the last seven-day period to provide any kind of closing thoughts or or final written statements from the applicant as well. After that information was gathered, the planning commission met again at their next planning commission meeting. And after reviewing the information that came in and deliberating on it, they they voted unanimously to approve their application.
And how many board members do you have?
We have seven. So the application was then or sorry, the the decision was then to a place where the written findings and decisions by the planning commission needed to be drafted. So at the meeting after that, after several drafts and discussions with planning commission members, they reviewed a final draft of that and and approved the findings and decisions in their November meeting. And following that, the notice of decision was then sent mailed out to parties of interest. Those are folks who participated during the hearings process, either through written or verbal comments during the hearings process. When that closed, Rusty English submitted an intent to file an appeal to the county court of the file. The file is twenty-four eighteen. And so that is what you have before you. The county zoning ordinance under subsection nine point zero three zero addresses the appeals process in its entirety in the local sense. Under sub three, subsection three under that, it discusses the process for which the county court then takes action or does not take action on the appeal that's been submitted. As it is lined out in that other printout that I have for you there here, the county court has a number of options here. The first one being to decline to hear the matter and enter an order affirming the lower decision. In this case, of course, the lower decision is the planning commission decision. Or accept the appeal and make a decision on the record without argument. Make a decision on the record with argument. Conduct a de novo hearing, which can talk to legal counsel about this, because this is basically a brand-new hearing. Or conduct a hearing limited to specific issues. And then sub four talks about the nature of utilizing the record within an appeal hearing review. The, under subsection three, the zoning ordinance calls for the planning director to provide a report, which I'm providing right now. And then also it asks for a recommendation. And so I I provided this and I'll just read it. As part of the report, the zoning ordinance calls for the planning director to provide a recommendation to the county court. If an appeal is filed, staff has provided the court copies of the record to date. Staff finds that all the findings in the planning commission's decision are supported by the facts and substantial evidence and information submitted into the record by the applicant. A thorough and proper review process was provided the county planning commission, in which they voted unanimously to approve the application. Therefore, it is recommended that the county court decline to hear the matter and enter an order affirming the lower decision as the Arnie County's final decision. This isn't a personal recommendation and it's honestly has nothing to do with the nature of the decision. It has to do everything with process. As staff, I felt the process was was provided in a very thorough manner and providing opportunity for everything to be heard. So given the nature that it was unanimous, I felt if there was a recommendation to give, I suppose that's it. However, of course, this is the county court's decision.
So our I believe our next step then is to decide how the county court is going to proceed. And those four options under section three B of the Arnie County zoning ordinance. Dominic, if you have any suggestions, guidance, or concerns, or or anything in this process, if you could let us know now?
Sure. Yeah. So first of all, could I just get a headcan of who who all is in the room, just so I know who's all present?
So we have myself, Commissioner Frank, Commissioner Doro, Planning Director McMullin, and for the public, we have Sue Ramsey and Barb Kennedy and Rick Paul.
And Holly.
And Holly, you're taking minutes.
Okay, thanks. Um, so I think Director McMullin did a good job, I think, explaining the sort of the zoning ordinance and the process that's laid out there as far as what the options are. And I think, you know, Mr. McMullin, in my experience with these, you know, often that's what happens is you'll have a planning commission decision and then a recommendation by the director about what the county court could do. But as Director McMullin said, ultimately, it's your guys' exercise of discretion about how you want to proceed. You know, you're the decision maker. So I mean, you're, it's based on your review of the decision and the record about whether or not you know, you think this merits any kind of further process. And I think that's what Director McMullin's getting at is that he's thinking that his view is the process was full and fair. And that's why his recommendation under is to decide this under three A, which is to decline to hear to hear the matter and enter an order affirming the lower decision. I think if you all, as the county court, you don't think that there's issues in the decision or the record that you have questions about, or that you'd like to hear from the appellant about, that would be a, that would be a reason to, you know, maybe make a decision on on the record with argument. So that would be no new evidence, but just listening to what the appellant has to say and then making a decision from the record based on those arguments. You know, I think making a decision on the record without argument, I guess, would maybe, there's lots of different ways you might, reasons you might want to do that. But one would be, you know, if you thought you know, there was some sort of clear error in the findings and that the record clearly supported, you know, a different decision. You know, or similarly, you know, you have the option of conducting a hearing de novo if you felt like there was additional evidence that either you were interested in receiving, or if you wanted to give the applicant the opportunity. I personally didn't really see much in the way of new evidence the applicant wanted to provide in the notice of appeal. I I can't say for certain that's the case, but that was sort of my interpretation of it. You know, or again, you've got that last option of conducting a hearing limited to specific issues. So again, that would be, you know, if you perceive something in the decision or the record that might warrant, or you might be interested in hearing additional evidence on specific issues, you could make a decision or enter an order to hold a hearing on specific issues that you delineate. So I don't really have a recommendation. I I mean, I I think the the recommendation from the planning directors has good reasons behind it, but ultimately, it's the county court's decision about how I would like to proceed.
Thank you. So being in a work session, we're just kind of here to get educated up on this process. And then would we then, upon recessing from this work session or adjourning from this from this work session, look over the record ourselves and then on a county court date or a special county court session or something, make a determination, a a formal decision, discussion and decision as to how we want to proceed? Is that where we would go next? I think you're muted, Dominic.
Sorry. Yeah, I think that would be appropriate. An appropriate way to go forward.
Okay. And and during that time, would then it be appropriate also for all of those of us on the county court to conduct our own reviews, gather information, whatnot, to prepare for that discussion in a formal county court session?
Yes and no. I I guess to clarify, I think yes in the sense that you should review the record. And you should review the decision. I wouldn't go outside of the record for considering the matter. I think if there's things outside of the record that you want, that you were interested in, that would be a reason for having further hearing. So yeah, your decision should not be based, in my opinion, it shouldn't be based on factors or evidence outside the record.
Okay. So but then that instance right there, if there was other information that that we wanted to consider, that might influence or might determine how we want to proceed, whether it's a conducted hearing with limited special issues or a de novo hearing, if there was other information that we wanted to hear on it. The other, the other options of making a decision on the record with argument or without, and then or affirming the lower decision, those should be limited to just the record that's in front of us.
Correct.
I think that's all I have that I can think of right now. Commissioner Doro, Commissioner Frank.
I'd like to ask Brandon, the one hundred fifty-day timeline we have, what's the start date?
The start date is eight twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-four.
So what's what's the one hundred fifty days?
That is a that's one twenty-six.
Oh.
Yeah. So the one hundred and and Dom, help me with this. The one hundred and fifty-day timeline is not it is a timeline in which the applicant can then under state statute, request from circuit court that a writ of mandamus take to effect, or that they can file a writ of mandamus in which the circuit court then requests or then tells the county court that they or the county have to make a final decision. Is that, is that accurate, Dom?
Yeah, I think that's right.
So if if a decision is made after that fact, it doesn't null and void a decision. That's just the timeline in order for which someone can then turn and file a writ of mandamus.
Is the hundred and fifty days by statute or by our ordinance?
By statute.
By statute.
I've got some questions and I'd just like to hear from folks here at the table. Is this, is this, do we discuss any of this? Do we just through our reading of the record, figure out what we think the answers to these are or not? So it's a work session. I didn't know, you know, the parameters of of what work we can do in this. Here are some of the things. Do we think there are specific issues we should hear more about? Is there any new evidence? Are there any evidence or facts submitted that we didn't feel were fully considered? What about things like how this fits into the long-term comprehensive plan, the conduct of our zoning and stuff? Is that just, that's not what we're talking about here, right? We're just talking about this particular application and and then also those were my main things. I mean, we all read it. We all you know, sometimes the record reads very convincingly to bring us to our own conclusions on this. So I just want to throw that up because this is our work session if we can or can't talk about these things.
Dominic, to keep us on track here, as a work session, it's not a hearing. So it's discussing the elements of the record and and those items that Commissioner Doro just mentioned, does that take us outside of the of the work session?
So it's a tough question to answer. It's not really clear exactly how you all are supposed to sort of deliberate or discuss this under your ordinance as far as like exactly what type of meeting or forum is supposed to occur. I think it would probably be best to have that in the latter meeting. I think probably it's safest for this work session to sort of talk about the process. And then I think at the, when you have a public meeting or hearing to decide how you're gonna, what your next step will be with the appeal, that could be, I think, the probably the more appropriate time for you to deliberate on it as a county court and and sort of, you know, to decide. I mean, ultimately, someone's gonna have to make a motion that, you know, that passes as far as what your, what your decision's gonna be under three A or three B.
But we can't make a decision in the work session, can we? Take any action?
I just didn't know.
Because I, again, it's not actually a hundred percent clear from the ordinance, what sort of procedural meeting or or forum you're supposed to convene to make that decision. But in my view, it would be best through a a public meeting and and not through a work session. I mean, obviously, this is open to the public as well, so it's not as if there's any lack of transparency, but I think also just in fairness to the applicant that should occur, you know, they don't have necessarily right to do anything other than maybe submit public comment if there's gonna be public comment at at a public meeting, but I think that yeah, it it should, I I would not recommend having this, the decision be today. And I I would, I would, I would caution against this, really kind of even deliberating about it and really focus more on process. And if you have, if you guys have questions about what you should do or not do at that hearing.
And my, my point on that would be the same, is that where we don't have specific written guidance within our ordinance as to how we would those proceed under work sessions or hearings or whatever, that we would default back to the normal standards of work sessions and hearings and and follow along those guidelines of what you just stated, that today's meeting would be about process only.
What is the potential chain of events if we will obviously in in an open session, we'll have to decide on those three options you gave, which is accept the decision of the planning commission, accept it with an argument or not accept it. Basically, those are the three decisions. If if we accept it, what is the potential chain of events afterwards? What rights does the appellant have? And if we choose not to accept it, what is the potential chain of events that the applicant pursue?
Okay, so if the, if sub A is is what the county court decides to do, which is decline to hear the matter and enter an order affirming the planning commission's decision, that becomes the county's final decision. So the county is done with it at that point. The applicant, or sorry, the opponent or anyone for that matter, I suppose, but the appellant rather, the they can file an appeal with the state order of appeals or what's referred to as the land use order of appeals. There's a timeline that follows our decision. That's also called the notice of decision. And so if, once that's done at the county court level, the orders mailed out to those folks or to the appellant, and then they can pursue the state level of appeals if they so desire. If the county court accepts the appeal and decides to see it in one of the four different alternatives that you've got, then the process plays out. And to some degree, the county court would would need to set an appeal review hearing separate from the county court date, unless you decided to do it all in one day, of course. But that's then the the county court would enter into a final decision based on whatever the decision was of the county court, and then the same process plays out. The appellant or even the applicant at that point. If you decide to make one decision or another, either side could then appeal the county court's decision to Luba.
And then I think from our conversations, potentially, and I think from the last time this happened, either one of those routes, when it goes to Luba, it could be remanded back to the county court.
There's always the possibility of that. They, you know, it's either it's either affirmed, meaning that they agree with, after after they take a look at the record and they go through their process, they affirm it saying, okay, the county did everything that procedurally they're supposed to be. They can, they can remand it back, which is, okay, this needs to go back to the county jurisdiction. And these are the issues that they need to look at, that they at they construct an order similar to what we would do only in their format and give give guidance as to why it needed to be remanded back for further review at the county level. Or they can, they can deny it as well. They can just say, hey, based on everything that we've seen, this just won't even work.
And and I would just add to that, Commissioner Frank, like if there were questions along those lines as far as you know, basically, anything going to the merits of the appeal and, you know, what however you want to characterize it, exposure to a Luba appeal or those types of things, the county court has questions about those, then my recommendation would be that those issues be discussed in executive session for litigation filed or anticipated to be filed so that I could provide candid assessments about that to the county court.
I'm sorry, my, I'm trying to digest all this, Dominic. I'm sorry. At at what point would you recommend executive session?
So I think, I mean, I think probably you want to at least put an executive session on the calendar or on the notice for the public meeting for this hearing, so that you have the option of going into executive session if you have those types of questions. It's common. So for instance, like if the board, say, state agency boards, you know, Board of Forestry, DQ, you know, if they have an appeal of some kind through their administrative process, they usually have an executive session as well, because if the board wants to go in and have questions about the appeal and they want to discuss that with legal counsel, they do that in executive session. So again, you don't you don't make a decision about what you're gonna do. You would come into open decision, open session to make your decision. But you would want to have that option of executive session if those types, you know, if the county court has those types of questions. And you may not know now, but there are things that could come up in the in the public meeting. And so that would be an option I would recommend that you'd want to have so that I could answer those questions without waiving attorney-client privilege.
Thank you.
Think as far as the scope of this work session and understanding the process, I don't need any more information or have any more questions. It sounds like at a public meeting, probably maybe on the twenty-third, we'll have to choose one of those options. I mean, go from there, whether or not we have an appeal hearing or don't. But it doesn't sound like it's appropriate to discuss anything that would be discussed in a particular hearing or even at that open session to decide what our decision is.
Do we have any dates? We need potential dates we need to discuss?
Well, and that would be my next question. Do we want to wait until the next county court session to have that, to make that decision or have a special session?
Well, three days after the county court meeting is the one hundred fifty-day deadline. So in that regard, I just thought if we need to have something in that window or whatever, you might want to all look at our calendars right now, Dominic as well. Not necessarily gonna do it, but.
If the hundred and fifty days, Dominic or 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 Brandon, if the hundred and fifty days clicks off before we have made a decision, that just gives the appellate the ability to file circuit circuit court for a writ of mandamus to say, county court, get on the stick and make a decision, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think the Commissioner Doris point, I mean, I think we want to try to do this within the hundred and fifty days. I mean, partly, it's like the applicant or appellant would have to, you know, if they insist on having a hearing within that hundred and fifty days, they could. I know at one point, I think they they wanted a delay to the planning commission meeting. Am I remembering that right? Brandon?
So the the applicant they expressed and why we had additional seven-day periods added to, basically, what is almost a month period of time tacked on to this was to allow a proper process in front of the planning commission to play out What is almost a month period of time tacked on to this was to allow a proper process in front of the planning commission to play out. Information wise, so the original seven day period for the record to be left open was requested by. Uh, Mr. English's representation at the time, he's no longer a a part of this, but, uh. The next two seven day periods. Were suggested to be added by the applicant. Um, and their representation. And so the the planning commission followed through with that, there was some confusion as to why there needed to be fourteen more days, but we figured it out on the record.
Well, I guess, I guess my point, um, I think we can justify if we go over the hundred and fifty days because of elections and new county commissioner being seated. And, um. Holidays and everything else that go along with the month of December and January, and we are working on it, I mean, with this work session and with planning. For future, uh, we may not make the hundred and fifty days, but it might be a hundred and sixty or a hundred and seventy, um. And and the writ just basically is gonna tell us that we need to. We need to get moving on it, is all that's really gonna do, is that correct?
I think that's correct.
So I'm not myself, I want to make sure we do this right, I'm not really that concerned about the hundred and fifty days because we are working on it. Um, but. Um, as the body here, do we want to wait until the twenty third to make that decision as how we're gonna proceed? Or do we want to have a special session sometime between now and then? If we can schedule it. Um, or just that purpose. Of. Of making a a decision on how we're gonna proceed. I mean, at that point, we could, we could choose option A, or we could choose option B with one of those four sub. Sub things under that. Uh, which if we chose option A. Um. There's no need for a hearing or anything, we're just choosing that we're gonna, we're going to affirm. The lower decision and we're done with it.
Yeah, it basically stamps their paths to go to Luba if they want faster.
I think we could do it at that. Meeting on the twenty third and it would be within the timeline. But I. Personally would like to see that meeting for the twenty third have a little lighter agenda because I think the appointments. Will be a big emphasis at that meeting, so I would be open to a. Additional session before then to handle this.
I'm neutral, whatever you decide.
What what does your schedules look like on the? Twenty first. Twentieth is a holiday.
I've got a noon meeting and then in the evening, there's that, uh, DLCD sage grass. Kind of a thing, so.
I don't foresee that this would take. It's a twenty minute meeting, thirty minute meeting, probably.
Morning or afternoon is good, just not the noon hour. I don't like early, early. Unless you have to. I'm gonna deal with I have to.
On the twenty first. If we anticipate it only taking a half an hour. I could probably do it at five right for that sage grass meeting.
I'm good at five.
I'm good at five.
Yeah, I'm open on the twenty first except for noon, so anytime works for me.
Okay. So let's let's schedule then, or I would propose then a a special session. On January twenty first at five P M. To, um, have the court. Issue a or make a decision on how how we wish to proceed.
Sounds good.
On my calendar.
Is there any other questions about procedural of this whole process, or Dominic or? Brandon?
I just want to ask Brandon, everything is in this binder you provided us, is there any additional? Like, that we should? Have access to. At this point.
There was a PowerPoint presentation which had the applicant's information and was presented to the planning commission. That is in digital form, it has the same information as in the record, I can provide that to you as well.
Is there, is there, maybe you provided this, but is there a recording of the hearing? That they can have access to?
I can share that as well.
Would that be, and is it just audio?
It is, yeah.
And. What software is needed to?
It's just probably an MP four, just Windows MP four software, you should be able to play it on your laptop.
Okay, thank you.
Very quick.
Well, we're back to the same grounds meeting on twenty first and and Brandon was just telling us five thirty to seven thirty, so.
That's a drop in meeting.
Yes, absolutely.
It's a drop in meeting, I don't think John's gonna be presenting any information, he's just accepting whatever folks who want to come in.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, our our special session shouldn't take. I'd be surprised if it takes fifteen or twenty minutes because all we're gonna do is make a decision on how to proceed.
But again, I would, I would recommend you include an executive session for the notice for that. Uh, special session, just in case you do have questions, you may not, which is fine, but I I think it's better to have it on the agenda than not have it.
Okay. Um. So, in that agenda for that special session. Item whatever, executive session if needed. Um. Uh. Again, procedurally, so if we decide to pick option three B, one of those four. Options under three B. Those, any one of those four is gonna require a public hearing, is that, would that be correct?
Uh, I would say everything except for. Three A, so three A would allow you to make a decision wi- without argument. In in which case you wouldn't need to hear arg- I mean, you wouldn't be hearing argument from the appellant or the applicant. Um, I mean, frankly, I'm not so sure you couldn't do that even. Um. At the meeting. On the twenty first, because it doesn't really require any further process, it just has you guys rendering a decision without argument.
Whereas, but whereas option A is just for affirming, but option B A. Would be either affirming or declining.
Yeah, right, so A would be declined, so you would, we would just, we would prepare some kind of. Order that says you decline it, B would be B, under B A, make a decision on the record with an argument, that would be like. You guys would sort of maybe come up with your own decision or something that you would adopt, but without argument, but any of the other options, so three A. I guess it's B. B C D, B C D, those would all require some form of of additional hearing.
Uh, Brandon, uh, not that there's, or or Dominic, not that there's necessarily a true answer to this, but. If if a, if a county court declined to hear, it goes right to Luba should the appellant want to do it, does that influence? Luba's process on when they're reviewing something? I mean, I wouldn't think it would, right?
I would say it's common. I think, I think it's common, I mean, in my experience with other counties, i- it's. I'm not saying it doesn't happen different ways, but i- it's most common where you have a planning commission, there's a full hearing. It's most common that the director will recommend that the governing body adopt that or decline to hear further appeal. Or that they just adopt the planning commission's decision, and I don't think that. I don't think that really has any impact on on the Luba process.
Thank you.
Okay. I can't think of anything else right now.
No, if you can get us those recordings and PowerPoint, I think we're good.
I'm on it.
Thank you, sir.
Dominic, anything else?
Nothing for me, thanks, everybody.
All right.
Thank you.
So then, uh, with that. Yeah, I don't want to, this is a work session, so I don't want to get into a big.
The recording available to. Myself since I was a precious friend. And I hear a recording.
It's it's a ma- it's a public meeting, so it's a matter of.
It's all public record.
Yeah. You just have to make a public record request?
Yeah, I can just share with you too. Yeah. Once I get it. Put into a form where I can provide it to the county court, I've, uh, I can make it available.
Okay. All right then, so, uh. Good time here, we shall stand adjourned. Thank you, Dominic.
Yep, thanks.